Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. City of Morehead, city council meeting is approximately 5:30 PM. If we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll address, are there any agenda amendments at this time? Seeing none, then...
Yep, actually, Ms. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure on Agenda Number 5A, I think, I'm not sure what page it is, should it read 2018 versus 2019?
Counselmember Carlson?
I believe it is on page, it's Agenda Item Number 5A.
Oh, there's a typo. You're saying under Financial Considerations? It says it was approved on December 10th, 2019, and you mean it should be 2018?
Should be 2018.
That's correct.
Okay, and then also on page 39, Agenda Number 12A, I believe it's the same typo, it should be City Council Action 1210 of 2018 versus 2019.
What page in your packet, Counselmember Carlson?
39.
I think those are just clerical, and we'll just fix them online. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
We'll make side noted corrections. Any other amendments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Nothing has been received regarding taking anything off consent. Is there a motion, I'm sorry, motion moved by Counselmember Durand, seconded by Counselmember Watson Curry. All in favor, please say, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognizations and presentations. And we will welcome our members from Flaherty and Hood, and Fredericksson and Byron for the 2019 Minnesota Legislative Overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Bradley Peterson. I'm a shareholder with the firm of Flaherty and Hood in St. Paul, and we were asked to come up today and give you a little bit of overview and introduction to our two firms and the lobbying services that we provide on Morehead's behalf in St. Paul. And I will also talk a little bit in my presentation about the City of Morehead's relationship with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And so with that, I will dive right in. So about Flaherty and Hood, the firm was founded in the early 1990s specifically to serve local governments in rural Minnesota. That's really been our key focus for many, many years. We do some other things, but really the primary business that we're in is serving local governments such as Morehead at the Capitol. We do both legal work and lobbying work. Our firm is split about half and half, and we currently have 22 staff members. So our relationship with the City of Morehead, almost since the beginning, our firm has had a relationship with the City of Morehead, doing both lobbying and some special project legal work. On the lobbying side, which I'm here to talk about, we've done work related to the Border Cities Program, the disparity reduction credit, and then also some work over the years in housing, economic development, bonding, and environmental and regulatory issues. So we have a long history representing Morehead at the Capitol. At the Capitol, it's myself and my associate Shane Zart, who does most of the work on behalf of Morehead. So our most recent work is related to some items in the tax bill. And as you'll hear from my colleagues at Fredericksson and Byron, we sort of split the portfolio a little bit. Flaherty and Hood tends to do most of the tax-related work, which is where the Border Cities Program falls in, and they've been doing some bonding and some other work as well, and they'll talk more about that. On the tax side, in 2017, we were successful in passing an additional appropriation to the Border Cities Program of $3 million. This program is, of course, split amongst the five border cities. We did work to fix a TIF issue that Morehead had in the most recent tax bill. In 2018, we worked on a technical correction to some Border Cities language, which was in the vetoed tax bill and will need to be looked at again this year, as well as some, done some research on enhancements to the Border City Program over the years. And this year, our primary activity will be working to get an ongoing appropriation to the Border Cities Program so that we don't have to keep going back to the legislature every so often and making the ask. That way, you're just embedded in the state budget and becomes part of the forecast, and it's an ongoing appropriation, which will be best for everyone. That's the primary work that we've done for the City of Morehead specifically recently. The next item that I'll discuss is the relationship that Morehead has with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. For your, whoops, just got ahead of myself there. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities currently has 97 cities across the state outside of the seven county metro area. We work primarily in five issue areas, local government aid, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, and environmental regulation and funding, specifically on these issues from a proactive nature, from a greater Minnesota perspective. The City of Morehead has been one of our anchor members. You're one of our largest members and have been members for a long, long time. Many city officials in the City of Morehead have served leadership roles with the Coalition, president, board, other things. Currently, the City of Morehead actually acts as treasurer for the CGMC, and Chris Volkers is acting in that capacity and sits on the, on the board as well. So we appreciate her good counsel and the strong role that the City of Morehead has played in a lot of our programs over the years. One thing, especially if you are new to the council, that you may be wondering about is what is the relationship between the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Cities? Of course, the City of Morehead, as just about every city in Minnesota, is a member of the League, but the CGMC works exclusively for greater Minnesota because there are some issues that, because of the League's broad constituency, large cities, small cities, rural cities, suburban cities, the two core cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul, they just can't get involved in weighing in on one side or another. So for instance, if you think about the local government aid formula, they can argue generally for additions to the money in the program, but it's CGMC that's sitting there at the table, making sure that there's a fair distribution for rural cities like Morehead. And the, the best way to think about it is, and the analogy that I've taken to using is as a teeter totter, you've got the League of Cities as kind of the base. On one end of the board, you've got Minneapolis-St. Paul and the metro cities and their lobbyists sitting on the other end, and sitting on the other end of the board is the CGMC balancing it out for rural Minnesota. And so we're really that counterbalance to other forces at the legislature. Oftentimes, though, we find ourselves working hand in hand with those other constituencies as well as the League. Little bit about our priorities for 2018. We're looking to get an increase of $3.5 million to the LGA appropriation. This would get it back to the amount of money that was paid out in 2002, not inflation adjusted, just the check that the state wrote to cities across the, across the spectrum. We're looking at advocating for $128 million for Clean Water Grant Loan Programs to help with the refurbishment and construction of various wastewater treatment facilities and water facilities across the state, city street funding. And then for many of our members, childcare has become an increasingly difficult issue that has been holding back economic development in their communities. So we're starting to do some work on that, that front as well. This by no means an exhaustive list, just kind of some of the highlights. One thing I want to mention in terms of local government aid, and all of this is, of course, in your packet, this is just a little teaser, appetizer, as it were, to some of our policy. Here's the history of appropriations since 2002 that Morehead has gotten in terms of local government aid, and you see it's relatively flat over the years. You can see the dip in the early years of the Plante administration when there was unallotments, a bump up, a little bump down, and then kind of flat. We're looking at doing some things in the formula that would help cities like Morehead because you guys are essentially at your ceiling in terms of how much LGA you get. And so we've already had discussions with members of the legislature about some formula adjustments that we might be able to make that would provide, as we put more money into the LGA formula, that Morehead would continue to increase and help provide services and keep property taxes at a reasonable level. So you can see from our proposal here, the charts, right now, Morehead's getting about $7.18 million in LGA. If current law were to prevail, no change in the appropriation, no change in the formula, you'd get about an additional $4,000 just because of how the, the natural shifting within the formula. However, with our proposal, $30.5 million increase and some formula adjustments, you'd go up a couple of hundred thousand dollars there on your LGA. So that's what we're targeting, that's what we're working on. Of course, between now and the end of the legislative session in May, there's a long, long way to go, and we're going to need your help in able to achieve some of these goals. And so in conclusion, I know many of you are coming to our Legislative Action Day on January 30th in St. Paul. Come down, lobby the legislators, get briefed on the issues, mingle with other city officials. Our summer conference this year is in Bemidji, July 24th to the 26th, and we are available for your viewing on social media at Greater Minnesota Cities and through Facebook and our website as well. So that's kind of the brief, quick hit on what Flaherty and Hood does, both for the city individually and through the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And with that, I'd like to bring up my colleagues from Fredericksson and Byron.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm here with Andy Palmroy, also with Fredericksson and Byron. Fredericksson and Byron is a Minneapolis-based law firm, started in 1948 with about 270-plus attorneys in it, but we have offices in greater, well, we have offices in Des Moines, Fargo, Bismarck, so we are a regional law firm. I'm the Chair of the Government Relations Practice, and we've had the Government Relations Practice there since 2006. I am originally from Morehead, so I have some ties back to the community. Left here about 15 years ago to pursue other interests and ended up being a lobbyist now for the City of Morehead now for about 10 years. One of the things that I want to emphasize is the fact that, that over the years, about 10 years ago when we were brought on, Morehead made a strategic decision to have two lobby groups working together on the issues. And originally, we would split up the issues, we would do the work on all the issues together, but we, we figured out the last few years that it would work better to divide those issues up, where Flaherty and Hood would focus on tax-related issues. We've been focusing more on the bonding side and the building code side as we've gone on. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Andy and just say a few words about what, what our recent efforts have been.
And Mr. Palmroy, before you start, just as an FYI, we do have a public hearing that we'll have to have at 5:45, so I just wanted to give you the heads up, just in case I have to cut you off.
Sure. Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, as Kevin mentioned, Andy Palmroy, also with Fredericksson and Byron, been with the firm about four years, coming from the legislative staff prior to that. And as Kevin mentioned, I take a lead for the city on some of the bonding issues. We've had a lot of success on the 2021 grade separation, on some additional flood hazard mitigation dollars. We're continuing to work on, you know, other bonding projects that the cities prioritize this year, the transfer station with the county, the 11th Street grade separation, additional flood money, those sort of things, also working on some, some building code issues to make Morehead a little more competitive with our friends across the river. And with that, maybe I'll stop there and let you get on to the next part of the agenda.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments?
Sorry, no, nobody heard that, but I wanted to publicly thank them for their good work on the behalf of the City of Morehead. Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to meet, I can say, council from both law firms, and on behalf of the council and the city, we thank you for your efforts to make our city competitive economically, and thank you for all of your hard work. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we've enjoyed doing it, and we look forward to working with you into the future, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can move on to a public hearing, which, oh, thank you. I wish I had to start that right away. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? If we had a chance to review the minutes?
I'm sorry, can we do roll call first, beginning of the agenda? Sorry, skipped right over that. Number one on the agenda, the roll call, if we can have the city clerk do it, that'd be great.
No worries.
Shelley Dahlquist.
Here.
Sarah Watson Curry.
Here.
Shelley Carlson.
Here.
Heidi Durand.
Here.
Joel Paulson.
Here.
Steve Gertz.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Judd.
Here. Motion made by Counselmember Durand and seconded by Counselmember Paulson. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And my understanding, trying to get to my point here. This is for the Community Development Block Grant 2019 Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have a little cheat sheet, sorry, in your drawer that you need to read, I think, for the public hearing. Do you see that? Do you know what he's supposed to read to open the public hearing? Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So the motion has been moved by Counselmember Durand and seconded by Counselmember Watson, oh, I'm sorry, Counselmember Carlson. And can we get a vote on motion, oh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public meeting is now open.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Huffman. I am the Community Development Program Administrator for the city. I want to thank you all for taking the time this evening to hold this public hearing for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Couple of notes, no action is needed tonight. Final council consideration is scheduled for the 28th of January. We are currently in a 30-day public comment period that ends on January 26th. No comments have been received to date, although prior to this meeting, I was informed that there's one coming soon. And there was a public meeting prior to plan development on November 14th in which no one attended. In your packet, you have a chart of activities proposed for 2019. Most of these are similar to past years. They're all consistent with our five-year consolidated plan. As I go through and summarize the activities, since Community Development Block Grant is kind of a mouthful, I'm going to just refer to it by its acronym, CDBG. So I'll start with capital improvements to public rental housing. Morehead Public Housing's Sharp View Apartments needs elevator upgrades, which are critical for its users. Improvements will preserve building property and enhance livability for residents, staff, and visitors. Funds are contingent on additional grant funding from other sources. Funds are contingent on additional grant funding from other sources. If those aren't awarded, CDBG funds will be used to do an additional home rehabilitation loan. The local match gives MPHA significant leverage points, which makes its grant application more competitive. The proposed budget for this activity is $43,000, including administration. The next project is one of the city's longest-running programs. It is the Home Rehabilitation Loan Program. These are no-interest loans that are repayable on sale. Loans range from $20,000 to $25,000. They are given on a first-come, first-served basis. Typically, there's a waitlist of six to 12 months. Income limits apply. We are proposing nine to 10 projects, plus emergency repairs for 2019. I would also like to note that not only has this program contributed to much-needed improvements in Morehead, in Morehead homes, but also has doubled the CDBG line of credit as a result of loan repayments this year. The proposed budget for this activity is $248,500, including administration. Next project is acquisition for accessible rental housing construction. Creative Care for Reaching Independence, or CCRI, will construct an affordable rental unit assisting disabled persons whose income falls below 80% of median income. CDBG funds will be used to acquire a lot that they will use to construct the unit. This will be provided on a deferred loan basis to CCRI, which accrues no interest and will be repaid upon the sale. Proposed budget for this activity is $40,500, including administration. Next, we have acquisition for affordable housing construction. Habitat for Humanity will construct an affordable housing unit for homeownership for a family whose income falls below 80% of median income. CDBG funds will be used towards paying down special assessments on a lot that will be used for construction of the unit. This will be provided on a deferred loan basis to the family selected by Habitat. The proposed budget for this is $25,500, including administration. Next, accessibility improvements through Freedom Resource Center. This program constructs ramps and makes other home accessibility improvements. Income limits apply, like the rehab loans. It is grant-based, though, so it is not repaid. The proposed budget for this activity is $2,200, including administration. After-school programming at Ramke Park is delivered by Morehead Parks and Recreation. This program keeps kids engaged and active, as well as offers snacks and homeownership help, or, sorry, homework help for the after-school program. Students are typically under 12 years old. Income limits apply. At least 51% of the participants have to come from households with income below 80% of the area median income. Proposed budget for this activity is $6,200, including administration. Next activity is Play Outside Daily Mobile Recreation for Youth. It is delivered by the Boys and Girls Club of the Red River Valley. This program offers portable recreation opportunities in Queens, Belsley, and Stonewall Parks by means of their Play Outside Daily truck, which is staffed by recreation leaders and filled with play equipment. Income limits apply on this as well, and the budget for this activity proposed is $5,200, including administration. Opportunities Under Transit, delivered by Metro Area Transit. This program provides discounted bus passes to extremely low-income individuals who are seeking or going to work or attending workforce training. Income limits apply, they must be 30% of the area median income or less, so for a single individual, that's $17,400 or less. The goal is 20 participants each year, and it's primarily for those that are homeless. The proposed budget for this activity is $4,200, including administration. Homebuyer education, offered by Lakes and Prairie's Community Action Partnership. The core principles of this program include home affordability, mortgage qualification, incentives, maintenance, and homeowner responsibilities. Income limits apply with that as well, and the proposed budget for the activity is $10,200, which will come from remaining 2018 CDBG funds, and that does include administration as well. And the last item is program administration, which includes program delivery, reporting, monitoring, and the Human Rights Commission as well. The proposed budget for administration is $92,777. Program administration and public service caps have caps or limits that are based on grant, award amount, and program income. Overall, the estimated budget is $513,889. Any significant fluctuations from this estimation will be addressed in a plan amendment, which would come before the council. That summarizes the items covered in the public hearing, and I'd like to open it for questions and comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that recap, or the plan. I had a question real quick about the project with CCRI. I didn't quite catch if that would be a single-family home, or will that be a group home, or can you explain?
Yeah, absolutely, and sorry, I should have included that. It'll be a single-family home, but their intent is to house four disabled individuals that meet the income guidelines.
So four, they each have to meet?
Yes, each have to be below 80% of the area median income.
Okay, and then 18 years or older, or is there a different age limit?
Um.
I suppose that's a CCRI question.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Watson-Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, a quick question on the second item, the home rehabilitation loans. I was just curious if we had data on 2018, how many applicants we had and how many loans were distributed.
Applicants? I'm not entirely sure of the number. I know we had 11 loans that we saw, 11 loans completed so far, one in process still, so a total of 12. And no, I don't know the number total. I can tell you right now, on our waitlist, we've got 18 individuals.
18 or eight?
18.
18, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Gertz?
Kind of a follow-up to that item from last year's budget. How much of the home rehabilitation loan program was utilized last year? The reason for my question is, do you end up, the processing takes so long that people don't end up utilizing the funds?
I believe they get utilized fully. This year, again, we still have one in process, but once that's completed, it will have used the 2018 funds fully, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the accessibility improvements, I noticed it's $2,200, and to me, that builds one ramp. I mean, is that utilized? Much was it utilized last year? It seems like it's, there's low funding there, especially if you're going to build a ramp or?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So for 2018, one ramp was constructed, and that did not use the full budget. Those are constructed, the CDBG funds up until now have provided funds to buy the materials, and then volunteers with the Home Builders Association have constructed the ramp, which is why we're able to do a couple a year with that amount.
Okay.
This year, to increase utilization, we're proposing to also have available for construction as well as the purchase of?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any citizens that wish to be heard on this matter? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
A motion moved by Councilmember Hendrickson, seconded by Councilmember Carlson, Paulson? Paulson. To approve the motion, can everyone signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion to oppose, same sign. And believe. Next will be, do we approve? My apologies, do we approve the minutes?
We did. Mr. Mayor, but we need to go back to number seven, citizens addressing the council next.
Yes, okay.
To see if there's any.
Want to make sure, okay.
Thank you.
Are there any citizens that wish to address the council at this time? And moving on to number eight. Unconsent. Number 10, okay.
It's done.
That's what I asked. Resolution to approve appointment of mayor to city council committees, boards, and commissions.
So, Mr. Mayor, I pulled this together based on the Charter section, as you can see, Section 2.07, which states that the mayor's appointment to council committees must be by unanimous vote. However, our city attorney has some clarification that we need. This is the first time we've kind of done it this way, so I'll let my, our city attorney.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, members of the city council, there was, I think, some confusion at our staff level as we were drafting the policy regarding per diem compensation for council, city council meetings and subcommittees. And under the Charter, if the city council creates a committee that advises the board, the city council, like the Advisory Work Group, that requires unanimous approval by the city council because if the mayor is serving on that. So if the mayor were to serve on the advisory budget group, that requires a unanimous vote. If it's an external board, like the diversion authority or Metro Flood Diversion Authority or the Land Management Committee, then it's by majority vote only, because the Charter distinguishes between what are truly council committees to advise the council on city business, and then you have external types of committees. And so there's a distinction. I haven't had a chance to look at whether the Board of Appeals is created by statute, but clearly, the first one requires unanimous approval, and the others would just require majority approval.
Councilmember Gertz?
So, is it unanimous present or unanimous of the council? Because we're missing one council member.
It's unanimous of the council, and since you have a council member that has not taken the oath of office, that position is not counted, so there's seven council members right now, so it'd take seven.
I thought she was sworn at 3:30. Oh. And then my other question is, the Board of Appeals and Equalization and Metro Flood Diversion Authority aren't, doesn't the mayor serve on those as default anyway?
I did not have a chance to look at the Board of Equalization, but you are correct on the Flood Diversion Authority. By agreement, the mayor has automatic seat on the diversion authority.
Okay, because I thought that the mayor always chairs the Board of Equalization.
I haven't looked that up yet.
Yeah, I don't know offhand. I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There wouldn't be an issue if we voted and all voted yes, and we didn't need to vote yes, right?
No, I think it's just clarification for future.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Gertz?
Just maybe a clarification from you, Mayor. Obviously, you're going to have a busy year, you're comfortable attending the meetings and covering that.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, those that might know, have more experience than this, but my understanding is this committee meets twice a year?
Equalization.
Equalization in the field?
Once a year.
Is it once a year?
Yep.
Then I would assume with advance notice, I should be able to make that.
But like the Red River Basin Commission and, you know, the other ones that are listed here, you're comfortable taking on that workload?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I would move approval.
Some moves, is there a second? Motion, with Shelley? Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Duran, seconded by Councilmember Shelley Carlson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Reports, number 12, on Economic Development Activities.
New mayor, new council. Look up here, it's a good day for Morehead, so happy to be here and working with City Manager Volkers. We've, we'll be including a monthly economic development report that you'll see at your city council meetings. This will be coming after we presented monthly to the Economic Development Authority meetings. So this month was a little bit unique in that you'll just see a lot of just monthly highlights, and then we summarized an annual report for my employer, Downtown Morehead Inc., to really kind of get into what we've accomplished in, in not even a year. It started in March, so happy to be here and happy to be working with all of you, and congratulations to those that are newly elected. Just some of the monthly highlights for the economic development report. We have the Fourth Street Lot. You are all aware of, the city has officially noticed this Fourth Street Lot, which is just directly west of the US Bank Building. It's a surface parking lot. That notice officially closes on January 16th, so just a couple days from now. We've had a couple inquiries, but mainly just kind of general information, and we will be having one development firm that will be submitting a full-on proposal before that notice closes. We'll have more to come with that and next steps as we move forward into the coming month. We've also had a great opportunity to work with West Central Initiative and other kind of close partners, but West Central Initiative is a group that does a lot of gap financing for businesses within the region. We also kind of uncovered that, you know, Morehead has a loan fund, which has about $900,000 of Morehead's money. There's no state aid or state-initiated money in that. We're working closely with those partners at West Central Initiative to kind of really utilize that fund effectively. It hasn't really been used that much in the past, so we're eager to start kind of fresh with a new partnership with the West Central Initiative and utilize that loan fund to its best ability. We've also been made aware that they do meet quarterly as a group. There's a regional economic development group that meets at West Central Initiative's offices in Fergus Falls. We also have the regional representatives from our State Department, the Department of Employment and Economic Development. Morehead really hasn't had a present, presence at those meetings in the past. Happy to report that you will be seeing myself and either myself, Amy Thorpe, or someone from the economic development team in attendance at those meetings. Exciting to announce that Folkways, this is a community kind of based organization, is bringing their kind of Red River Market, the indoor food market, to the Morehead side of the river in February and March. Those are the beginning of February and the beginning of March. They're going to utilize the Yum!Com Center, bringing up to almost 5,000, if not more, people into our community, so really excited to be partnering with Folkways and doing a lot of things for our community in Morehead. Excited to kick off in 2019 what's called a Business Retention and Expansion Program. I mentioned this to, I think, all of you at one point in time, but really, for us to do effective economic development work for this community, we need to get the pulse of our business community, the development community, and just our residents as a whole. So this is going to be a consistent effort to really have strong public outreach. We're going to the businesses, we're going to the developers, figuring out what our challenges are, figuring out what our strengths are, and really tailoring our work plan to make sure that we are working for those businesses, we're working for the people of Morehead, not just us coming up with strategies that aren't effective and aren't utilized to its full potential. You know, Jonathan Judd, Mayor Judd, you did a great job at the Chamber event, the State of the Cities. This next kind of point on here is talking about the Fargo-Morehead Science Center and Performing Arts Center. I think it's no secret, I've said it from the start, I think we wouldn't be doing justice to the people of Morehead if we at least didn't explore the possibility of having it in Morehead. Doesn't mean we have to have it or figure out how we fund it or figure out where exactly it is, but I think the conversation needs to start. I think, you know, we're at a point where we have to find a community champion that can lead this effort, that can go kind of explore what would be available from the state level. I'm excited to connect with members at Concordia and MSUM that could maybe be that community champion. Each month, we have in here just community council, our city council action items and upcoming ones, so you're well aware of those. Thank you for all those that attended the Community City-Owned Properties Meeting. I think that was a fantastic event that we had a few weeks back. Amy Thorpe and myself will be attending the Economic Development Association of Minnesota, which is abbreviated as EDOM, their winter conference. This is another great opportunity where I think in the past, you know, we've had a presence for Morehead, but it maybe hasn't been as visible, so we're excited to be at these conferences, to work with our So we're excited to, to be at these conferences, to work with our state partners, to work with our, our peers across the region and the state, to really find out what some best practices are. We're all facing very similar, similar issues and figuring out what some challenges and some, some new ideas are out there and really kind of bring it back to, to be effective for Morehead. Thankful for, for city manager Chris Volkers and the Chamber of Commerce. We were able to attend, attend the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce event in St. Paul last week. This was right before the State of the Cities event. It was, it was a long day, but I know our, our representative, Paul Morquart, and our Senator Kent Ekin were very glad for, for some Morehead attendance at that event that had over 1,500 people attending. So very excited to, to, to be there and, and to show our support and, and what a wonderful opportunity with Representative Paul Morquart being the, the chair of the Taxation Committee at the state level this year. I think that's a tremendous opportunity and the, the folks from Flaherty and Hood kind of mentioned the, the opportunity to capitalize on our permanency for the border cities funding. So I'm really eager to, to touch base on that. You all should have received a, a copy of Downtown Morehead, Inc.'s first annual newsletter. Again, it started in, in March, so it hasn't been a full year, but it's been a great year and thankful to city management, city leadership, the council, the former mayor, and I'm again looking forward to working with each and every one of you because I do feel that this year, 2019, is a pivotal year for, for Morehead, not just Downtown Morehead, but all of Morehead. And, and we have the opportunity to really kind of put ourselves on the map and move forward with a lot of great stuff. So I'm excited for, for the happenings to come and, and, and we're not going to slow down, we're going to keep moving. So happy to answer any questions and, and again, congratulations to those that are newly elected.
Any questions for Mr. LaPointe? Councilmember Gertz.
Maybe not so much a question, but one of the, you know, thank you for the report. I mean, I, I think by reporting to the council, the mayor and council on a monthly basis, not only informs the council, but also has an opportunity for the public to hear what's going on because there's a lot of people that watch the, the broadcast. The one thing I want to point out is, that I'm really excited about is the Business Retention and Expansion Program. I served on the Economic Development Authority for five years and pushed real hard to get the executive director for the EDA, and this was one of the reasons why. Because we have over 800 businesses in Morehead and I just felt that that's really the heart and soul of, of our business. Morehead citizens are, are very committed to doing business with Morehead businesses and it's just good to have somebody going out there and visiting with them because that's really where we're going to see our growth. We can chase big, big developments and big businesses that come here, but I, I think our, you know, our success rate is going to be much higher to keep our existing businesses and grow those businesses. We've seen it through Regals and we've seen it at Pactive and a number of, you know, major businesses that have expanded here in our community. And just to have that communication so that they know that if they have an issue, they have an advocate working with them to make sure that they don't decide, hey, I don't feel like I'm getting any attention here, so I'm just going to jump across the river. So I, to me, I think that's probably the, the jewel that, that we can polish here in our community is, is our existing businesses. And so I'm really excited to see that, that, that program will be an active program. Just a final thing to say about that is we're all, we're all ambassadors for the city of Morehead. And if there's an opportunity that you can use any of our, the council members to help advocate on, on the Moreheads behalf, I, I would hope that you would reach out to, to us. I'm presuming I speak for the council when I say that. Because what's, what's good for Morehead is helps our community. So I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Gertz, and couldn't agree more. We have the ability to kind of use our Economic Development Authority as community ambassadors as well, our, our city council and, and the mayor. A lot of times we'll, we'll have the ability to bring somebody along and, and have that, that attendance as well. I think it means a lot to have especially elected officials along and really show their commitment. And you're right, it's, it's a, it's a small thing of just going out and talking to these folks, but you would be surprised how little interaction some of these folks have had with the city. And I think, I think that just become, became a, you know, just a trend for a lot of different cities, but if you, if you spend a little bit of time, I think it goes a long ways to, to making sure that these businesses are successful and, and we certainly want them all to stay in this community too.
Councilmember Shelley Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Derek, could you talk a little bit about, in our packet it says that you've been working with the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Corporation on the software?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we all know they have a, a new leadership over there with Joe Resso and, and Joe comes from a background of doing a lot of different work in economic development, from running a, a regional economic development corporation to, to running chambers and downtown organizations. He also was a part of an organization that developed software specific to this Business Retention and Expansion Program. He is looking at bringing some uniformity to the region as far as when we're going out to primary sector, in their realm, primary sector entrepreneurialism kind of industries. They want a cohesive software platform that all this data can be housed in. Now, that doesn't mean that we can see what West Fargo is doing or, or what Fargo is doing in specific terms, but that means if Joe and his team from the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC are out talking to a Morehead business, they're able to input that information and we're able to share that or see that information for our knowledge and for our purposes of trying to keep that business around or to have an understanding that maybe they're struggling with this type of problem or they're looking to expand, we have a direct access point to that information. Vice versa, if now myself or anybody from City Hall goes out and meets with somebody, we could put that input into that software and they would be able to see it as well. I think it's, it's a great idea. You know, we didn't touch on it, a lot of it is just conversing with the businesses and, and figuring out what their needs are, but I think there has to be strategy upon, upon specific data that we want to get from these companies, whether that's how many employees they have, you know, other kind of points that we can, we can strategize with, that we're always up to, to date with our business community. And this software helps with that. I should clarify too, so even though Joe Resso at the EDC has helped develop some software programs, the software they're exploring is not associated or affiliated with what he had created in the past. So this would be a, a separate platform, nothing for his personal gain.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. LaPointe? Thank you again for all of your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
I believe we move down to number 25 on the agenda, which is a resolution to approve award of contract for bulk fuel.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Paul Feigner, the Facilities and Fleet Manager for the city of Morehead. I just wanted to give everyone a quick update on where we were last we talked in December about contracted fuel and what we do is we operate a fueling facility at the Public Works Facility for city equipment and vehicles. In 2018, we saw a rise in price for the fuel purchases and we're looking into new processes to purchase that fuel to hopefully generate the lowest, lowest overall operating cost for the city. We did issue a RFP for contracted fuel in December and the decision was made to decline the bids at that time. The reason being is they were higher than we anticipated and in the, excuse me, in the recent months with the sharp decline in fuel prices, hoping to play the market, if you will, and receive a lower price there. So just kind of an update on where we are in that process. What we are doing starting January 1 is still monitoring what that bid came in at and what we are actually paying. So we can still compare the two processes and see what will be the better venue in the end. What I'm requesting now is approval to award contract for the third and fourth quarter of 2019. We currently have a RFP out for that to receive bids and are looking to award contracts if we see the price favorable to do that process. And that is set up to, we would award it to the lowest, lowest bid, overall cost. Also, another process we discussed is conversations with the city of Fargo and joining them in this process. This is the request for proposal and the contracted fuel is the process that Fargo uses for all of their fuel and they have for quite some time. We're continuing conversations with them so that in, hopefully in 2020, we can join a contract with them. The method, methodology there is that we would have a higher volume of fuel and hopefully lower the unit cost for the purchasing that fuel. So again, here the overall goal is to provide the lowest cost fuel for the city and we're looking into several options to, to do that.
Councilmember Gertz.
So, you know, I appreciate the update and, but we're really not voting on any purchases tonight because that comes out of your general budget. Previous years, we, we didn't, I mean, if it was in the budget, it was in the budget. I can understand if we had contracted out a number of, you know, purchases for a large volume, but am I missing something there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gertz, I believe it's on the agenda because the state law requires we go out for bid for anything over $175,000 a year and then the council would approve that purchase. So we are asking for your approval ahead of time to award the bid, and that was my question about the timing. You're asking for the council to approve award of the bid, but the bids, bids are not in yet, correct?
Correct.
So you're asking for the authority?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we wait to award a bid until we have the bid?
So Councilmember Gertz here, the, the, in this situation, when the bidders bid, they have, give us a 30-minute timeframe after the close of the bid to award the bid because it's that tight with the fuel prices going up and down. So therefore, we have to ask for your approval ahead of time to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder.
Sounds like the steel industry.
Is that correct, Paul?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we're assured that the same policy or the same procedure would follow. If the bids come in higher than the price last year, you would reject and then start over again or?
Yeah, when, when the bids come in, we'll evaluate them and make the decision if we want to award it or not. If they're unfavorable to a large degree, we would decline them again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Feigner? Did I pronounce your name right, sir?
Yeah, Feigner.
Feigner?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there a motion on the table to consider? The motion to...
Award the contract for bulk fuel.
Is there a second? Motion made by Councilmember Watson Curry, seconded by Councilmember Shelley Dahlquist. All in favor, please approve by... Oh, question, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Question on the motion by Councilmember Gertz.
So being that we don't have the, the actual vendor to award, would it be prudent, maybe there's a question for you, John, to award authorization or approve the authorization to make award upon receipt of an acceptable bid?
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Gertz. So in these situations, typically you would authorize city staff to accept the lowest responsible bid and then have the city staff fill out a certification once the bid's accepted and return that back to the council.
So perhaps it could be a friendly amendment.
Is there a friendly amendment to, to the current motion? Okay. And the current amendment is to, amendment is to?
Lowest responsible bidder.
The authority?
Authorize city staff to award the bid, the bid to the lowest responsible bidder.
Is there a second needed on that? I believe.
One second. Did you make sure that you?
Or you agree?
I, yes.
Okay. So the motion to amend with the language stated by Mr. Shockley has been motioned by Councilmember Watson Curry and seconded by Councilmember Shelley Dahlquist. Is there any other further discussion needed on that friendly amendment? All approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Feigner.
Thank you.
And I believe we are down to mayor and council reports.
Shit, I forgot to bring my performance review. I have it. You want me to go get it? I can have data.
I'm not sure. Oh, thank you. Councilmember Watson Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while, it seems. Well, one thing that I wanted to highlight, it's been published on the city website, but the pedestrian bridge between Memorial Park and Oak Grove is open. That construction took, took a while, so I know we've had a lot of folks close by to that park wondering when it is indeed open. And it is open across with myself this weekend and opens up some different options for people commuting or doing some recreation along the river. January 9, I attended the Cass-Klay Food Partners Commission meeting and I wanted to draw attention... Oh, Chris has stepped out, but we had a presentation by Melissa Soblick from the Great Plains Food Bank. They had conducted a statewide study and also including Clay County as well, as that's part of their service. I did forward the, the full report, which is about 100 pages, but there is also a highlighted or an abbreviated version of it. There's additionally a one-page snapshot on hunger in Cass and Clay County. So I would request that our city manager share that with city council and city staff as, as she sees appropriate. But one thing I just wanted to highlight, a couple of things. They highlighted the demographics and it was really interesting because the face of hunger looks different than you might imagine. 64% of them are in permanent housing, 68% of them are, are white. And it's a very educated group as well, 85% of them have completed high school. So that's pretty concerning. The other thing that Melissa made a point of talking about is they really want to work upstream and not just giving people a basket of food, but really helping them address the root causes of their hunger issues. So that's looking to help from us, whether it's through affordable housing, transportation, or health access. So the last thing I wanted to highlight is the tough choices that families are making. I thought this really was a interesting number. Households are choosing between food and sometimes housing payments, so that's 41% of them. Utility payments, gas for cars, medicine or transportation. So all those things were 30% or more of Cass and Clay users. So I will be sharing that report and so, Chris, I would ask if you could share that as appropriate. And I believe that is all I have for my report.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Watson Curry. Is there any other reports on behalf of council members?
I'll just do, Mr. Mayor, I'll just do a really quick report on the Morehead Library. I attended the first meeting, or my first meeting for them, and they are looking to possibly do some type of event in February that I'll be forwarding information to Chris to disseminate out, so you guys would all be invited. Also, they have two notaries on their staff now that can provide service to individuals if they need that type of service.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Carlson. Any other reports? I'll just briefly state that I had the pleasure and honor of speaking at the State of the Cities address on behalf of the Fargo-Morehead Chamber of Commerce. Cities address on behalf of the Fargo-Morehead Chamber of Commerce. Again, I think we're in a great position right now. I think the city's looking great thanks to the work of city manager Chris Volkers and the city staff. Greatly appreciate the hard work and effort that everyone has put forth. Hopefully, the citizens will know that we do have a very competent, very educated, very well-informed city staff that is working hard and even into the midnight hours, apparently, as they're answering emails at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, trying to make our city better. So again, thank you for your work and all that you've done, and I guess that's all I have for my brief report. Anyone else have any items or reports to make? Seeing none. Then we'll move on to summary of the city manager's 2018 performance report. And so regarding the summary of the performance evaluation of city manager Chris Volkers, the city council of the city of Morehead did meet on December 10th, 2018, in executive session to conduct a regular performance review of our city manager Chris Volkers, with a period commencing January 1st, 2018, through December 10th, 2018. During her annual performance evaluation, the Morehead City Council evaluated Ms. Volkers in the following specific areas. One, elective body relationships. Two, organizational. Three, community relations. Four, fiscal performance. Five, intergovernmental agency-association relationships. Number six, communication. Seven, personal. And number eight, goals and target achievement. The city council has determined that Ms. Volkers' performance in each of the above described areas range from exceeds expectations to exceptional. The city council did review Ms. Volkers' overall performance as city manager and determined that she was exceeding expectations for the position of city manager. Ms. Volkers did provided, or, sorry, then provided input and feedback regarding her position and discussed goals and targets for achievement for the upcoming year. Thank you again for your hard work and your effort, Ms. Volkers.
Thank you.
Thank you, the city council, for the support. Thank you.
Then we'll move on to number 32, city manager reports, updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City council, I'd like to give two updates tonight. First, I'd like to introduce our new finance director, Carla McCall. Is Carla, sorry to do this to you, can you come up for a second? I'd like to introduce you. Carla started, let's see, right before Christmas, so she's been here about a month, almost a month, not quite, almost. She has significant city finance experience, so we were very fortunate to find Carla. Could you tell them a little bit about your background, Carla?
I have served as a finance director for municipal government in multiple states across the country. I've been in Montana, most recently North Carolina, but always seemed to come back to Minnesota. So I was in rural Minnesota for 15 years, then went to North Carolina for three years when my son was in the military there. And then he came back, and all my children still, grown children, are here in Minnesota, so we decided it was time to come back when they started having little ones that we wanted to see. So I was in Faribault most recently for four and a half years, and then when I saw Morehead's opening, it was an excellent location, centralized to my children and grandchildren, so I was excited to come up and be able to extend my help and do what I can for the city of Morehead.
Carla's been doing a great job in providing some insight and maybe different ways of looking at things, so it's always good when you have somebody with that experience and she can come in with fresh eyes. So I know Dan Moly's been excited about it, and a lot of the staff, of course, have been excited to have you, so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you, Carla. My second report is, we do have our new lead prosecutor in the audience, Cheryl Dyson, and if you have any questions, she's glad to come up and answer them. I'm going to give you kind of an overall summary about what is going on with the city prosecutor office. So if we rewind, in November, we were given the notice that, or, excuse me, February 1st, we would have to take over all city prosecution. That was, notice was given to all five cities, Morehead, Dilworth, Holly, Glendon, and Barnesville. We've been meeting with the other cities while we planned for this. We didn't think we could do this, you know this, and we asked for an extension because we didn't think we could do it in two and a half months, and so, long behold, we ended up hiring Cheryl Dyson right away from the Clay County Prosecutor's County Attorney's Office. And she came over, and then we started advertising for the other four positions or three and a half positions. So I'll give you a little history about that, but first I want to say a big, huge kudos to our HR department. We have never done such speed hiring in our life, and I don't know that we could ever replicate what we did again, but Jill Ware is here as our HR director, and she led the effort, and John Shockley was extremely, extremely instrumental in this. And so we are up to speed, we are staffed up, we have all five staff on board starting before February 1st, which is amazing. We are fortunate to get all five staff with county attorney experience, so they can, they'll walk right in, and on February 1st, they'll be able to just go to court and handle the caseload. We hired, at last time, I think I mentioned to you, we were going to have two prosecutors and two clerical, which is exactly what we were paying for from, at the county attorney's office, for all five cities to do this prosecution. When we were told that we couldn't have an office or be located over in our vacant space and our workstations and offices that are vacant in the Clay County Law Enforcement Center, in our own police department, we had to find space. The only space we had was in city hall here. So what we ended up doing is bumping our IT staff, who, our IT director was great and he offered to be bumped, they had just moved there six months ago, and we had just remodeled their space six months ago for them. He, we had to relocate them, and then we took the space on second floor where IT is currently, we had to remodel both. There's additional expenses with that. And then we had to hire a third prosecutor. There was no way we could get back and forth this far and meet with clients and handle that caseload with two attorneys covering all those courtrooms and being off the campus of the courthouse. So we had to hire another attorney, so there's another significant cost associated. I do not have numbers for you yet, we're still trying to figure out everything, but we have hired three attorneys, all from the Clay County Attorney's Office. They applied, interviewed, and were hired, so three total, Cheryl being the lead. And then we have a paralegal who recently worked there, and she will be here full-time, and then we, no, she will be here 25 hours a week, sorry about that, 25 hours a week, without benefits, which is helpful for our cost. And then we do have a full-time legal assistant who did apply also from the Clay County Attorney's Office. She actually has victim witness experience, she handles it over there. We are so fortunate that we have that experience that, again, we're going to be able to hit the ground running. We won't need to recreate anything. In fact, John's office has been very helpful in helping us set up the office to do more, to be more efficient in how we process the cases. Cheryl Dyson also would like to go paperless in our city prosecutor's office, which would be huge for us. We reallocated like a copier, a secondhand copier down there, we've got a couple chairs for people to sit, reallocated, but we did have to buy the workstation so people can sit there. And then, as I said, relocate and remodel space for IT. So those are kind of what's going on. We've hired, or we've applied for application and access to the BCA and all the online systems that we need in order for the city prosecutor's office to do their job. The court's been great, by the way, so they have invited Cheryl over to meet with their monthly, I think?
Judges' meeting.
Judges' meeting, where the prosecutors and the defense attorneys, public defenders are meeting to talk about the caseloads and so forth. They've already invited her over to participate in it. That was very, very helpful, the court's been great about that and very inclusive. And in fact, the county attorney staff has been great helping in most areas, so that's been, the victim witness area specifically, has been just great. The other thing, we're meeting with the five cities, we being one of the five cities, they've all expressed their interest, they'd like to know how much this is going to cost them. Of course, they want to know that before they go to their city councils and get approval to contract with us for this service. Regardless of their participation, we would have to set this up anyway. So I am going to be asking the city council for authority to, for Morehead to pay the upfront cost, because we would have to do it anyway. So it would be, seem only fair, their budgets are set, we need to do it, there will be an amount to be transferred from reserves that I'm going to be requesting to set up the offices with the workspace and the accesses and so forth. It shouldn't be, you know, huge, but it will be something that I'm going to ask that Morehead absorb. With that, there will be a task force, or what are we, what are you calling it, an advisory board?
Advisory board.
Yeah, with the five cities, so they can communicate back and forth with our prosecutor, and they are very thrilled about that. They haven't had as much communication as they would prefer when they're in processing their cases, that they write the citations on and the long form on, and they want to know if the city prosecutor doesn't prosecute, why, for example, if they decline prosecution or they settle for a lesser charge, they want that information, and that communication hasn't been going back and forth. So we've got this advisory board, one from each city, will sit on it and work with our city prosecutor and kind of advise them how we do business. So this really is a true partnership with our cities, and everybody's pretty excited about that, I think. So that's my part of the report. John, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered all.
Sorry.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Volkers regarding her report? City Prosecution Services, Councilmember Gertz?
So one of the reasons that the county stated that the price that they charged us went up so much is because of the workload. And does, I don't know if I should address this to Cheryl, but I'll address it to you. Does the team that you've hired have concern about the workload?
I won't, I'd ask Cheryl to come up and address it. What she, what's been relayed to me is that with the two attorneys, they weren't sure they could do it with the two attorneys. We were going to start with the two attorneys, because we thought we'd be on campus and we could do that. If you recall, I offered for the third attorney to the county. So we're still at the level, right, that the county, that we offered, the county was requesting in year one. So we're at three attorneys and one and a half clerical staff. I'll let Cheryl address specifically if they think they can handle that workload. I'm pretty sure they, she said they can, but I'll let her address that.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Cheryl Dyson. You know, honestly, to answer that question, I have a very good feeling about it, but at this stage, it is, it is a gut feeling based on my work of almost 14 years in the Clay County Attorney's Office. The cases that we are going to be working on solely here in the city prosecutor's office were interwoven in all of the Clay County Attorney's, what will now be the Clay County Attorney's cases. So it's, I don't really know how to tease out those numbers. I would imagine that there's probably something that Clay County administration could do, but of course, we have been working so hard and so fast to get all of the office and the hiring and, you know, IT and all that stuff on board, that that is not something that I have specifically looked up, even if it is accessible. So again, I'm just going to go back to telling you that I believe that three prosecutors will do a very good job at this. One of the things that I really want to do is not short shrift the cities in the services that they are getting, the law enforcement, because I know that they were frustrated for many years, and I can attest to the fact the county attorney's office is a very busy place. And so there were decisions made to focus on the big crimes, and the little ones often went by the wayside, and of course, the little ones have victims too. And so, and interests as far as the community's concerned, safety and that kind of thing. So I just, I'm very excited to have this opportunity to focus on those crimes and give law enforcement the tools they need through prosecution and supporting, you know, their endeavors to make the community safer. So yes, long answer, but I do think we're going to be able to make it quite fine with three, and I just told Chris that I would be checking in with her and letting her know how things are going.
Obviously, the staff that came from the county to come to be on the city's team must not be concerned about it, otherwise they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have made the jump from the county to the city. So I'm presuming they must feel comfortable with the workload that they're going to be expecting.
Yeah, they do. I, I mean, just anecdotally, people were very concerned when it was going to be a two-attorney operation. The three of us, all of us are just very excited, the paralegal's excited, the legal assistant is excited. I mean, this is going to be, honestly, something here I'm going to get up in the morning and look forward to going to work every day. It's going to be exciting to develop this department from the ground up. It's already been great for me, and I know they're looking forward to coming and joining the city.
Well, I appreciate you coming on board, and Chris, thank you for, and John, thank you for the effort that you put forth to solve this situation. It was unfortunate that we'd work so quickly, but I appreciate the effort, and I'm sure the council will feel the same way, and look forward to having a successful prosecution attorney's office for the city.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Dyson? And I can piggyback briefly with Councilmember Gertz. I do appreciate Ms. Volkers and Mr. Shockley for bringing us up to speed and also making sure we're not missing a beat. Having worked in that position in the county attorney's office, I can attest that, yes, you will probably need three attorneys to do that. There's four courtrooms, for the public to know, in the courthouse that all operate at the same time. And unless you're going to clone someone, you're not going to be able to have, and there's still one, we're still one courtroom down, and those cases are scattered out amongst four different judges, three different judges, so coverage is a big issue. And in order to be efficient and be effective, you have to invest in a, in a strong prosecution office. So thank you, Ms. Dyson, for stepping up to the plate and willing to serve us. We really appreciate it.
Totally my pleasure. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding that matter? Then moving on to number 33, executive session. The council now enter with a motion, executive session pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.03 to discuss negotiations regarding adjustments to the city manager's employment agreement. Motion moved by Councilmember Gertz and seconded by Councilmember Duran. All in favor, please signify your vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we now move into executive session. We now move into executive session.[444.02]
Okay, we have exited executive session. I'm assuming, since I'm still new to all this, do I need to make a motion to exit
No.
executive session?
No, you just need a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good to me. A motion to adjourn, moved by counsel person Carlson and seconded by counsel person Watson Curry. All in favor, say goodbye saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes.